Okay, we'll call a meeting to order as the City Commission for August 1st. We have a quorum. First thing on our agenda would be invocation with us. Christine Gilson with Trinity Episcopal Church. Julius.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, El Dorado and all the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. Send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'll have the pledge allegiance. Join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, we have personal appearances. Jean Plummer and Linda Baines with the Frontier Western Celebration.
Thank you very much. I'm Jean Plummer, 1121 Douglas Road. And we're here tonight to reiterate my invitation to all of you, to the community, for the Frontier Western Celebration, which is this week. Ten years ago we started this. This is actually Herb's idea. We can blame it on him. He had just come here and we had a meeting and he mentioned a rodeo and from that we went to a bull ride and actually we're having a rodeo this year, but it's a little different kind of rodeo. But activities will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I'll let Linda tell you what all they are.
It's kind of exciting to see the fencing up and the stages up and the arena will be coming in a couple days. But it's going to start Thursday night with a ranch rodeo. Those are 10 to 14 teams of just Butler County Cowboys and it's what they do every day. And so that, but it's timed, so that'll be fun. Friday night starts the concert, mutton bustin', and the bull rides Saturday, the same. We've also got arts and crafts in the park and horseshoe tournament and stuff going on at the museum and then again more mutton bustin', bull ridin', and another concert. Sunday, Cowboy Church, and then the trail ride off the lake.
Tell them about our horseshoe guy.
The horseshoe guy that started this a couple years ago is in, at the World Horseshoe Tournament this week. He had to qualify last week. He took first in his division. He had 78 percent ringers. So he's pretty darn good. So we're cheering him on to win world.
We're sorry he's not here, but he's doing a great job.
Wow.
Making Eldorado look good, we hope.
Yeah.
Thank you. We hope you all come.
Yes.
And you have, I gave you each a copy of the agenda there so you'll know what's going on. And for people who are watching on TV, we're at frontierwesterncelebration.com.
Dot com. Things get started at the Civic Center.
Pardon?
Things get started, it's all at the Civic Center, right downtown, pretty much.
Yeah, except for the arts and crafts and the horseshoes.
Yep.
And the gates-
Lots of events.
Gates open at 6:00 on Thursday, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And you get the whole weekend for 20 bucks.
Okay.
Children are $5 for the whole weekend.
Okay.
It's a wonderful family event and we're happy to have been here for 10 years, so thanks. See you there.
Do we have your page on Channel 7 or links on our website? Do you know that?
I was thinking that I saw it there. Okay? Yes.
I'm sure it's there.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
And you listen to Jean and I on the radio in the morning.
All right. And Tabitha this year has joined us for our committee and she will be doing the parade. And that's at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning, so.
I will be in the parade.
Oh.
Directly.
Okay.
She's nervous about it, but she'll do fine and we'll have a wonderful parade, I'm sure.
We will.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. No more personal appearance. Next on our agenda is public comment. Anybody from the public wish to address the commission? Okay. We have one. Okay. Please, I'll run through, I'm going to run through these items here for public comment. Just to set the ground, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
State your name and address, please.
Richard Smith, and I requested last Tuesday for a personal appearance.
Okay. For a personal appearance?
Yes.
And we're here for public comment right now, is that?
I've requested with Brian Gartland. I talked to him last Tuesday.
Okay.
Where I've requested a personal appearance.
Don't have it on our agenda. I apologize for that. What's the nature of the personal appearance?
I think, is this about your tickets at your building?
It's in regards to the revoking the conditional use permit.
Yeah. This is a legal matter and so it's not, it's not, it's the reason he's not, has a personal appearance and it really doesn't fit public comment. This is something that's in the court and it's being handled in the court.
Sir, is it in the court?
So what?
Sir, is it in, is it in the court? Is it a, is there, is it a ticket or a municipal court matter that you're wanting to talk about?
Well, I just wanted to make the commission aware of the situation, though. It seems to be getting, there's, there's a great deal of money and use of manpower for a situation that I don't think, you know, deemed necessary.
Mr. Mayor and commissioners, Mr. Smith has not only tickets pending across the street, but in addition, there is discussion before the county commission pertaining to these matters. And I just don't think this is the appropriate forum to take these matters up. I know, at least in the matters across the street, he is represented by counsel as well, so I don't think this is the right forum.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what he said.
At this point, we will not, not want to entertain any discussion about legal matters in front of the commission if they're pending, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, then can I draw your attention to a situation on the, regarding the street in front of my house?
You may do that.
All right. I had showed a picture to this, is it Brian Gartland? When I met with him last Tuesday. The street between Topeka and High, Finney Street, between Topeka and High, was put in, I think in 2001, there. There is a crack running full length of the street. And it has grown considerably here in the last three years that it's become evident there. I stuck a ruler down there and the thing is nine inches deep and approximately six inches wide in one, in some sections of it there. Now, I would, if, if the city manager can make use of four or five people going to county commission in regards to my other situation, I would certainly recommend that he direct attention there to street maintenance there, which-
I'd talk to Herb. I talked to Herb about that, about that on Finney and on Topeka where the street is separating. And I asked if there was an underground river that ran underneath there because one of the houses in the neighborhood, water actually is running out of their front yard.
No, that's down on, that's down on Topeka.
Right. And it's also on Finney. It comes through Finney, through my backyard and to the house behind me. And the city knows about that situation.
In that area, though, that wherever they did under Bury Utilities there, it's not directly involved in that area.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't believe it's, it's just been a street separation that's, but it's, it's been going on for three, better than three years. I mean, you can see by the, by the width of the crack that it just didn't happen overnight.
Right, right. It's brought to their, it's been brought to their attention.
All right, I appreciate that.
Well-
I suppose, can I talk to the, I guess the commissioners personally regarding my situation and complain against the city manager?
You certainly can reach out to the commission one at a time. Legal matters, we will likely refrain to talk very detailed, so just-
Well, it's not so much legal matter, but it's just the expense of being involved here
Okay.
That the city is incurring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Being done, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda was set out with minutes from our previous meetings from July 19 and July 13. I think 13, if you sound right. Work session last week, which would have been the 19th and then the 13th. Yeah. Have a chance to read through that? Any questions or comments on the minutes? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda as presented, be approved.
Second. Okay, so moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda is the 2017 budget. We've spent several, several meetings looking through the budget. I think we also talked about, early on, we each gave some goals and priorities to staff that we would like for them to consider and I think much of that has even been included in this budget. As it stands, and during our last discussion, we had some positive news out of valuation, so that was, that allowed us to do, to proceed with a minimal increase. The increase being primarily focused on preparations for what it might entail for the senior center. And that is a one mil increase that we're here for. Is any presentation or discussion from the staff at this point?
No, sir, there's nothing changed. I did follow up and visit with Kevin, who's even here. And I, when you asked me earlier, I was correct. We're wanting, waiting to make sure that the commission approves the budget. Once that tells us what's happening in 2017, then we'll move forward with getting in earnest and have those discussions with the senior center.
Okay. Any, anything else? Any questions or comments from the commission on our budget?
I just want to commend staff for, when we started this process, I realize we didn't know, realize or know the valuation was going to go up, but I thought for sure we were looking at a three to four mil levy increase. And yes, the valuation helped, but the main reason we ended up with a one mil increase was because of staff and how they, they didn't, I mean, how they cut to the bone. And I think they ought to be commended for it.
I agree. And I just want to point out, Mr. Mayor said, you know, this is partly, you know, because of the senior center. I think we looked into that carefully and we said, you know, us taking it on, really us taking it on is crucial to the senior center existing. And so I think we made that decision and move and are working towards that with the hopes of being able to continue to provide the services for the folks in the community to use them. That's all I want to add.
Okay. There's no further questions on that. We'll move towards public hearing for the, for the budget. We'll open up the commission now for, to receive public hearing or comment on the budget. Anybody wish to pursue, wish to address the commission on behalf or regarding the budget? Please state your name and address.
My name's Lotis Lauter Hernandez. I live at 1136 South Summit. I wasn't going to make a comment, but I understand, at least what I heard today is that you plan to have a one mil levy increase.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering why? Because of all the projects the city has that supposedly brings, bringing in money, we have a tower that's supposed to be saving so much money on electricity. We have a stadium that's supposed to be bringing in so much money. And that's just naming a few.
We're, we're taking on the senior citizens.
I'm a senior citizen.
Right, we're taking on the senior citizen building over there. That's why you got the one mil increase.
Uh-huh, and you're doing what? You're adding to it?
No, it was because of funding and because of the situation they're in.
They've been self-supporting up to this point.
Yeah, I know.
They can't do it anymore. And they need to-
So it'll close doors unless they pay.
They're not getting enough money from the state and the county?
That's correct.
Correct.
And we did this to ensure that the seniors in Eldorado would have a senior center.
Well, I know, I've been up there several times and I have never really felt welcome. I, one time, I did pay membership for years, but I never felt welcome. The only time I ever had anybody that I felt welcome was when they had the Thursday night, I think the Thursday Night Dance, this country western.
Or Saturday.
Saturday, no.
Thursday, okay.
Thursday.
Well, maybe with us having more involvement now, we could help approve some of those things.
Well, I don't know how long ago it's been, but I was one of those people that came up here and strongly supported the commission, giving the senior citizen more support on it because at that time, they were having a lot of expenses. Of course, there had also been an addition to the north, quite a good-sized addition. And I, for one, was concerned because at that time, I offered to provide all the cabinets, kitchen, and whatever they needed. And one of the senior citizens that seemed to have more influence in the board itself got them to refuse it. $4,000 worth of cabinets are still sitting in the storage place. Do you remember that, Herb? But I thought, you know, when you mentioned this today, I thought, well. And I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I may just make one more. We want anyone to look at our budget that wants to. We try to make it available in a myriad of sources. We will, it's on, you can get it at the library. It's, we take a copy to the library. It'll be online. You can come to City Hall and look at ours anytime you want. So if anyone has any interest in it, this year's, last year's, next year's, we, we make them very, very available and try to get them to people anywhere they want to get them.
Okay. And each one of us have a copy of it, so if anybody has a question, you can even seek out one of your commissioners. Seeing nobody approach the podium, I'll go ahead and close public hearing and move on with a motion. Ordinance number, please.
S-1350.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number S-1350, an ordinance attesting to an increase in tax revenues for budget year 2017 for the city of Eldorado be approved and to approve the 2017 operating budget in the amount of $29,964,961, providing for an estimated mil levy of 48 mils and to certify the same to the county clerk.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any further discussion? None? I'll have roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the agenda for setting a public hearing date for CDVG grant program. I think this is relative to the housing efforts from the Housing Committee that's, that's been formulated and continuation of public due process to get ready for CDVG, Community Development Block Grants for the community. Any further questions or discussion on that? It was something we talked about in our work session as well. None? I think the recommendation is to set for August 15. I believe that's in evening time, is that right? There's a time not listed in our agenda.
Yeah, it's in the motion, 6:30 PM.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we not change the date of the question-answer period?
It was changed to August 4th. It was going to be next week and now it's this Thursday.
This Thursday at 6:30?
Here.
Here.
Here at City Hall.
And that's an informal-
Let me, let me read aloud this background. I think I'll do a better job here of that. The city will be applying for the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Housing Program. The grant may be up to $400,000 and may be used for the following: multifamily, single-family, owner-occupied, rental rehabilitation, or demolition. Beginning August 2nd, 2016, the city will be accepting pre-applications to determine the target area and use of, target area and use of funds. Holding a public hearing is part of the application process to apply for the grant. The grant deadline is August 31st. So we're going to spend some time, we got pre-application out right now, which is August 2nd through the 15th or further on. Tell me when that closes.
22nd. Yeah, there's so many dates, yeah.
Yeah, there are a lot of dates, that's why I kind of want, after-
We have sign language going on here.
I saw this and I deduced.
Okay.
And actually, Mayor, Linda's come in, do you just want to have her come up too and say?
Linda, do you have anything you want to add to that?
She's a big part of the discussion.
And without taking too much from the hearing, probably the more important work is the pre-application. And so you may want to just talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, thank you.
And that, Linda Jolly with Eldorado Inc., that's the piece of the puzzle that I did want to talk about. It's important that people within the community that have eligibility and interest in the grant can fill out an application. They can do that several ways. They can get a printed application at the engineering department or online at ELDOKS, 360eldorado.com. In either place, the application is online. It talks about eligibility. Eligibility is determined by, partially determined by income levels and those income levels are there. Owner-occupied properties as well as landlords can apply for the program. And the piece of the puzzle that makes the pre-application important is trying to determine a target area. We are, this is a very competitive grant and we score more points if we take pre-applications and we know we have a sufficient amount of people interested in the target area that we set. We recognize that there's a lot of need for housing rehabilitation throughout the community. We know we can't do it all this first time, but it is the opportunity to get a start and then to continue in coming years to target additional areas within the community. So anyone that has a lot of questions or any questions should come to the meeting August 4th. You can also call the engineering department at any time. You can call my office at any time, which would be (321) 1485. Or call the city at (321) 9100 and ask for the engineering department. So that's my commercial for pre-applications.
We talked about a target area. Do you want to talk about the boundaries for anybody who's in, has property in those areas? I mean, it's a large boundary now.
It's a lot.
We're trying to hone in on, on some interested areas.
Yes. The application also scores points when you make the biggest impact on your target area. So the largest area you want to have is 250, maybe 300 homes total. And to give you a sense of that, a block is, an average square block is 10 homes, 10 to 12 homes. So you can see that it's about 20 to 22 square blocks area. So there's a lot of those areas in our community. We're assuming that the application and target area will be something that is south of Sixth Street and potentially west of Main. So that's a big area. So if you live in that area and you're interested, be sure and-
East of High.
Could be, but we could get a lot of applications in a concentrated area and choose it, so-
I mean, that map we got, it was east of High.
Well, and even, I mean, today, it's pretty much unknown where it's going. And so the only, the only place-
So that map was cast in stone?
Uh-huh, and that was to show you what we've judged so far.
I didn't lie to people.
Well, I think that the only, the only places that's probably ruled out is north of 12th, maybe. And so it's about, it's about the age and condition of neighborhoods. And I think that if an area gets a large concentration of pre-apps in, so a neighborhood wants to do a lot of work, that'll be something that you consider when you decide what neighborhood. And so, again, to Linda's point about impact of a neighborhood, the more work you get done in a neighborhood, the better it's going to score. If you got, if you did our eight or 10 homes throughout the city of Eldorado, it doesn't have as great an impact on a neighborhood. And so I think what, what you got the other day was just the portions that we have gotten rated, wasn't it?
I think that's the area we felt we could, we would have the income requirements, the LMI, where we know we have aged houses that need rehab. And we discussed the mailers going out to those areas where we could seek input from those areas and we thought we could see the biggest impact.
Well, if you're watching, dude, sorry I lied.
Well, those people are going to get direct mail. So the people on that map are going to get a direct mail, but it isn't necessarily locked in stone.
And as you know, we have landlords that might have a fairly large portfolio and they might be willing to participate in the program. And when you look at all the addresses, they could be either in a concentrated area or a large area. We've, we've looked, we know we have some landlords that have a significant number of homes in the area that needs talking about. So. Other questions? But we're anxious for the August 4th and if people miss that meeting, call us because we'd like to see your pre-aplication. we'd like to see your pre-applications. And they're pretty, the application itself is fairly simple to fill out, it's more just informational, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
But we need preempt, preempt will help our application, so if you have any interest, fill it out, it doesn't mean that you're committed to it, it's just a signal to the state of Kansas that, that there's interest in the program in El Dorado.
So, there's, if there is interest, contact El Dorado Inc. or the city engineering, or certainly attend the public hearing that we're going to set here momentarily. All right? I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to set the public hearing for 6:30 PM on August 15th, 2016, to be held to discuss applying for the 2017 small, or Kansas Small Cities CDVG program.
Seconded. And that is going to be here in this room, right?
Yes, sir. It's going to be in conjunction with your meeting.
Okay, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Looking forward to having interested parties come into our next, our next commission meeting. Yeah, thank you. Thanks Linda and Inc. and the Housing Committee for their efforts and city staff for working on that. It's got a tight timeframe and has a lot of great opportunity in it. Next on our agenda would be the 2016 Standard Traffic Ordinance Updates. I think we have Chief to talk to us about that.
Good evening, Chief Zaiman, El Dorado Police Department. As you know, we become, we come before you every year to adopt STO and ordinance, STO is the Standard Traffic Ordinance, this is printed by the League of Kansas Municipalities. Basically, what it is, is a compilation of most popular traffic laws that cities use in the state of Kansas. It's not an all-inclusive book of all the state statutes that had to do with traffic, but these are the most used. When we ask you to do this every year, we always talk about the changes in the ordinances. This year, the major changes to the STO is a result of a Kansas Supreme Court case that was this year, State versus Rice, and it had to do with implied consent laws for breath-alcohol tests, you arrest somebody for suspected of DUI or drug driving. Basically, in a nutshell, they, let me back up a little. KSA 2015 Supplement 8-1025 criminalizes the refusal to submit to or complete a test or test deemed consented to under KSA 2015 8-1001 to determine the presence of alcohol or drugs. The court held that regardless of implied consent laws, an individual has an expectation of privacy in his or her bodily substances, and thus breath, blood, and urine tests remain a search under the Fourth Amendment. As a general rule, warrantless searches are per se unreasonable. One exception to the general rule is when an individual gives his or her free involuntary consent. Under the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments, an individual's consent may not be coerced. When an individual faces criminal charges, if he or she withdraws his or her consent to a search, the individual's consent is no longer freely involuntary given. While the court found that the state does have compelling interests, it seeks to protect through KSA 8-1025, the statute is not narrowly tailored to serve the state's interests, and thus is facially unconstitutional. In response to that decision, they had to amend or remove some subsections to the sections in STO that have to do with driving while under the influence of alcohol, drugs, or the breath or blood tests. So what they did, and I can run down them really quick, and if you want any of the real technical explanations, you might have to turn to Mr. Murpham, but Section 30 that has to do with driving under the influence of intoxicating liquor or drugs penalties, they took subsection H2A that had the wording that the Supreme Court deemed unconstitutional. And Section 30.1, subsection M2B, that has to do with driving a commercial motor vehicle under the influence of intoxicating liquor or drugs, they took that same language out of that subsection. Section 32, subsection C2 has been removed, that had to do with preliminary breath test. Preliminary breath test is in, under another section number, but there's no traffic infraction involved with that any longer because of this Supreme Court decision. And Section 30.2.1 was removed in its entirety, and that's refusal to submit to alcohol or drug testing. When this court decision came out, we've got many forms that we have to fill out when you arrest somebody for suspicion of DUI. State had to change all these forms to reflect these changes as a result of the Supreme Court ruling. I anticipate there may be a remedy on down the road, maybe next legislative sessions, I don't know if they plan on rewriting some of this to fix it or not, but the way I read this right now, there's no penalty if criminally, if you refuse to take a test. There are administrative hearings, which I believe are civil, aren't they, Mr. Murpham, they're done through the Department of Revenue, so that's a separate action. I think that that has to do with surrendering of your license if you fail the test or refuse it, so I think, I think that civil process is still be there, but to assign a criminal charge or a fine or both to, because you refuse the test, they've taken that out, they found that unconstitutional, so. Any questions on that? I know it's...
Would you like to do a layman?
Yeah, I was headed towards the layman's explanation now, now that we've gone through...
If you get, if you get stopped, current, before the Supreme Courts, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, before this Supreme Court ruling, in Kansas, if they asked you to submit to blood alcohol, you had to. If you didn't, it was a charge, there was a law, you had to submit.
A criminal charge.
The Constitution says we are all not subject to unreasonable search and seizure, so that has gone away. You don't get charged criminally for that today if you refuse. However, your license is, is not guaranteed by the Constitution, it is a right. And so, if you tell them, "No, I don't want to submit," you're still subject in Kansas, the penalty is a year with no...
It's a privilege.
It's a privilege.
It's a privilege.
And so, right, and so you get, you lose your license for a year, I think.
It depends on whether you've had prior failures, it depends on the level of your, not if it's your refusal, it just depends on the priors.
And so, it's, it's still, there's still penalties if you fail to submit to those tests in a different court.
Failure to submit to those tests, how does that change, I mean, how does that change the officer's procedure in terms of ticketing, if you will, or with the driving under the influence law? How do you, how do you know, then, I guess?
Well, and it, and number one, we don't, we've never relied solely on that breath test to begin with. It's all the other factors going up before the stop, the sobriety test that you do of the same. We've had plenty of convictions on people that refuse to take tests altogether, so, so that part doesn't change. There's a lot of other things involved than just the breath or blood tests, so. Any other questions on that part?
What's the Section 175-1?
Yeah, I was going to come to that next. The only other change in the STO was Compression/Release Engine Breathing System, they added that language to the definition section, and it's just another terminology for Jake breaking or engine breaking that the semis do, so they've added that language, Compression/Release Engine Breathing System. And that's all we have on the changes of STO.
All right, any further questions on the commission?
G-1220.
24 what?
G-1220.
1220, okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number G-12-20, and ordinance amending Section 10.04.10 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas City's Edition 2016 be passed and approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, being done, we'll move to roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move to Uniform Public Defense Code.
Okay, UPOC, similar to the Standard Traffic Ordinance, is, again, a compilation of the most common misdemeanor charges that cities in Kansas use. Again, it's not an all-inclusive list of things we can charge people with, it's just the most common. This book also is written and published by the League, and we have some changes to UPOC this year. Under the smoking definition, the definition for a medical facility has been added to remove and any psychiatric hospital license under KSA 753307B, and amendments there too, due to the fact that KSA 753307B was repealed, and the detention for juvenile correction facility officer or employee has been removed. Section 3.2 of ST, or UPOC, subsection B2, battery against a law enforcement officer, they've added the language, the definition of attorney has been amended to include city attorney, assistant city attorney, city prosecutor, and assistant city prosecutor. Although these positions are not listed in KSA 215413, the editor found them to be appropriate under the general intent of the statute. There was a passage of four bills this legislative session that have resulted in a need to make some amendments into UPOC. House Bill 2501 amends Section 3.12C, Breach of Privacy, to include the following parties as exempt from prosecution for violation of an individual's privacy, and those are a provider of an interactive computer service for content provided by another person, a radio common carrier as defined by KSA and amendments thereto, and a local exchange carrier or telecommunications carrier as defined by KSA and amendments thereto. Senate Bill 133 amends Section 5.8, Purchase/Consumption or Possession of Alcoholic Liquor or Cereal or Milk Beveried by a Minor, to provide immunity from prosecution for one or two persons under 21 if they are providing support to another person needing emergency medical services and law enforcement assistance. Immunity is provided if the one or two persons request medical assistance on another person's behalf, if they reasonably believe that that person is in need of assistance, and they are cooperative with emergency medical services personnel and law enforcement officers in providing that medical assistance. House Bill 2462 amends 6.1, the Theft Statute, amending the definition of felony theft of property or service from a value of 1,000 to a value of 15, I'm sorry, yeah, 1,000 to a value of 1,500. It's important to note there are other crimes for which 1,000 remains a value, which the crime becomes a felony. HB 2462 only amended the definition for theft and made no changes to other crimes. And finally, HB 2436 amends Section 1014, Operation of a Motor Boat or Sailboat, by excluding any person operating a sailboat that does not have a motor and has an overall length of 16 feet, 7 inches or less, while such a person is enrolled in an instructor-led class from the requirements of 10.14. Probably won't be dealing with that last one too much around here, unless there's a big flood or we annex a lake.
East Park.
Yeah, there you go, Davis Farm.
Okay. What's this really saying, the Senate Bill 133, about minors and support of another person needing emergency medical? What's the, what's the layman's terms of that?
What, what they're wanting to do is, they don't want to, let's say that someone, some people not old enough to drink or at a party, someone gets too drunk, their friends are worried about them, be, needing, going to die, something bad's happening, this gives those people that call police or called an ambulance immunity from prosecution for MIP, minor in possession, minor in consumption, MIC. It gives those kids a, get rid of a deterrent to calling to save their friend or to aid their friend.
Okay.
And I absolutely see that as a good thing. I think a person's well-being trumps the MIP charge any day of the week, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments on the Uniform Public Defense Code? Speaking none, I have an ordinance.
Ordinance?
1221.
I move that ordinance number 1221, and ordinance amending Section 9.04.010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to public offenses and referencing the Uniform Public Defense Code Edition 2016 be passed and approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Then we'll move to roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
And Mayor, this doesn't pertain to this agenda item, but Tabitha said I would be remiss if I didn't plug our national night out again tomorrow night from 5 to 8 PM, so we'd love to have you all out, East Park, free hot dogs, hamburgers, prizes, a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
All right, we'll move to setting here a date for, hearing date for item number seven on our agenda, is to set a hearing date for project number 473.
Yes, Mayor, Commission, this is paving the alley between Locust and Cave Springs Avenue for Walnut River Brewing. The project is complete, and we're asking you to set a hearing for August 15th, 2016 to spread the assessment.
Any further questions on the commission? None, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to set a public hearing at 6:30 PM on August 15th, 2016, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessment of cost of project 473 and further direct individual mailings to E to the owners liable for the special assessment.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we'll add another public hearing to our meeting agenda on the 15th. Thank you. This is the alley that's by the brewery, right?
Correct, Walnut River Brewing petitioned the city to approve that alley and its final circuit.
Okay, item number eight is new business. Anything, new business commissioners wish to bring in front of the meeting?
Shall I start?
Sure.
Okay. Vote tomorrow. Polls open at 7 a.m., close at 7 p.m. Please get out and vote. Airport Advisory Committee meets this week on Thursday, so no update from them. CBB met two weeks ago, and basically we discussed the Drums Across Kansas and how successful that event was. The rec department met last week, and they have finished up their summer activities and are gearing up for their fall activities. So, things are going well there also.
Do we have yet any figures from the Drums on what, or anything that we can, I don't wanna report anything if it's not finalized, but...
We do have them, but I don't have them tonight.
Okay.
But I'll bring them next time.
It'd be good to...
Or have Jen come.
Be good to talk about, yeah, how that turned out in front of the commission.
And I may mention, can we talk about soccer? Could I mention that to the commission?
Sure.
Several years ago, man, I don't know, a while back, the commission wanted staff to work with the YMCA on seeing if we can find common ground, and so rather than splitting our children on programs to the detriment of everybody, let's see if we couldn't find some common ground and do some programming together. This fall, we think it'll be the first time it's going to be a city YMCA soccer league, and so, this is gonna be the first product that's actually come to fruition from those discussions and that work. And so, pretty excited about it.
Good.
And I would just say to our staff that worked on that, thank you, because I know that that was, I mean, that's been a big project and a lot of long conversation with a lot of different moving pieces between our branch here, Wichita Metro, and, you know, kind of what we've done, or what we've done in the past traditionally. So, I know that wasn't an easy, quick thing. So, congratulations and thank you.
And I think that, I think that over this period, and it may be independent of these discussions, but in addition to Wichita Metro has kinda discovered that El Dorado's...
Different.
Different. And so, yay. And so, we're gonna have...
Great first step.
Right. I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be wonderful. Maybe the only big difference is they do think they're gonna play all the games at the middle school on artificial turf. We'll still use ours and have them ready for practices and anything else they want, but we do think they're gonna play games at the middle school. Try to get that done.
Okay.
I'll go next. El Dorado 8 didn't have a meeting last week, and I just wanna remind everybody about the CDBGH program and the meeting on August 4, the informational meeting at 6:30, and the next meeting on August 15 at 6:30 for the public hearing. And also heard that cell phone tower on 11th Street is banging again.
Okay.
Yeah, the neighbors are starting to complain about it.
I'll get it. Scott, you gonna take care of that for me?
It's pretty loud this time.
Do we know why they have a chain on it?
I think they told me, but I don't recall.
We had that wind the other day. I think it knocked it loose.
Okay.
It's getting loud again. And don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Anything else?
Prairie Trails hadn't had a meeting, and don't have anything to report on that, other than I've had, continue to have good comments on our new greens. I think they're getting a lot more play. That's good. And I'll echo the rest of the commission about getting out and vote, because bottom line, if you don't vote, you don't have any right to bitch about anything.
Okay.
I'll just reiterate what Kurt kinda plugged there a little bit ago and encourage folks tomorrow night at 5 o'clock, correct, at East Park, National Night Out. I would just encourage anyone in the community, take the kids, go down yourself.
After the vote.
After you vote. But make sure and take advantage of that. I know they've put some work into making that a fun evening, so I encourage folks to do that. And then I had a meeting not related to the city with Union Pacific about a week ago, and in that conversation, she found out that I was on the commission and wanted me to relay the message. They're trying to work with cities across the state to encourage them, if possible, with the equipment that we have when it comes to snow and ice and plowing. If, she said, most cities lift the plow over the tracks, but if it's able to plow over the tracks to do so.
I can't imagine us lifting.
And we might already be doing that, but she just said that they're kind of putting a big push to make sure that if they are a city that lifts it, to go ahead and just plow, you know, over the track. And if for some reason it causes any damage, to just let them know and they'll get it fixed right away. But I said I'd relay that.
Okay.
I have the name of the gal. I'll send you her information just if anyone had any further questions, but...
And I'll share, I'll let Brad know, but I think, I mean, we're not, we wouldn't lift very much.
Yeah. And that's what I thought, because I've never noticed it.
I've never noticed it.
I would just share that for what it's worth, and that's all I have.
Yep.
Okay. I'll share a few things. Commissioner Lewis already talked about already not having a meeting, and then the CDBG grant stuff we've talked about earlier today. Main Street, I'll do a plug here towards the end. Frontier Western's coming up, so that's a Main Street event. Hope everybody can join that. There was a REAP meeting last week, last week. Continued the discussion about regionalism. We toured the, we held our meeting at WSU, and after the meeting, we toured the Innovation Campus, which is a pretty impressive effort that's going on at WSU, and learning a little bit about the businesses that are locating on campus, what that means for, so, and we had a, Dr. Bardo talked about that. Pretty impressive. And then we talked a little bit more about the city-to-city trip, which I've been invited to go on. It's in September to Nashville. I'm looking forward to that trip to see how Nashville and its regionalism efforts and how that maybe could translate to here and what we can learn from that. That's what was going on at REAP. Couple other things. We have any update on the disc golf process, where we are with that?
We're at the RQ process on that still.
Have you mailed them out yet?
We have not.
Okay. You anticipate that?
The goal was August 5, the response, just haven't gotten to that.
Okay.
Okay.
The next one, I guess, is as we think about that and look forward, we, and we've through the budget, I guess the commission could start thinking about what are next steps and what we wanna do about our Parks and Rec master plan. We made that investment. I don't wanna see it on a shelf. We gotta figure out what it is. So, I think we've had one work session on it. Maybe it's time to do it again, and I guess I would ask the commission if it's appropriate or they'd like to have that adjoint with the rec committee, and we can kinda hammer out together what some of those priorities might be. We've kinda done it separately, but does it make sense to get together and talk through that?
That was gonna be one of my questions to you as well. The staff took the rec committee last week, asked about the sales tax. It seems like the most obvious way to fund it. While supportive, they had one member that really wanted to see a spreadsheet or a table, we're gonna spend this, this is what it's gonna cost. We don't have that yet, because really, those decisions haven't been made, and so, it's kind of a chicken or an egg. It's a big plan. It could spend lots and lots of money, and so, maybe that is, maybe your suggestion isn't appropriate idea that you have a work session, tie it with the committee, and see if together you all come to a consensus and move it forward, because that's what Kevin and I'll do as well. It's, I don't think the commission had any intent of putting it on a shelf, and so, you gotta figure out what, what and how.
Yeah.
And so, there needs to be more discussion. So, if you'd like, we'll do that.
I would definitely welcome bringing the two together.
Okay. Kendra, you're on that committee, so. Okay, let's do it. I guess work it into our work session schedule the next few months, and let's keep that, keep that discussion going. All right, anything else? Have anything else?
Did you, was there a BRAG meeting? Did you go to a BRAG meeting?
I did not make it to a BRAG meeting. I went to the REAP meeting.
Okay.
Oh, we did have city managers roundtable last week, so I did get the opportunity to welcome some city managers from the region and share some fun facts. So, they met here. I was glad to host that. That was through the WSU School of Public Administration. But BRAG, I did not make a BRAG meeting.
Marking.
Oh, okay.
The 23rd of August.
Yes. Yeah, thanks for that reminder. The 23rd of August BRAG will be here in El Dorado. We're hosting here, so that'll be another great session.
No, oh, at the stadium.
Stadium.
Yeah. And again, that, back to regionalism, and that's, BRAG is kinda being driven by Mayor Longwell, isn't it?
Yes.
And so, I like, because it's more than just talking about regionalism, it's putting it into action, and our interactions with the city of Wichita have always been very supportive, especially with Mayor Longwell. I mean, he wrote letters on our application for...
He's, he has voiced, a great voice of regionalism, and has, you're right, written letters of support as we make application and compete for businesses to locate your work from the state. So, it's a good partnership. Absolutely. Okay. City managers' report.
The two, the two things I wanted to report was Y-Soccer and then the WSU managers, and so, we've covered those. One thing, I guess, I think, given what's kinda going on in some portions of the country in interactions between people of color and police, you may hear about the officers getting training to deescalate a situation. We've been doing that train, is, yeah, Kurt's still here, we've been doing that training for years. Yeah, we can get in a fight, but it never is gonna be a good outcome, and so, we wanna, we wanna reduce tensions and stop, and so, things that you hear about other people starting to do, we've been doing. We've been wearing body cameras for a decade, maybe?
So long.
So, five, so not a decade, in seven years. And so, again, to protect our citizens and to protect our policemen, often it's a he said, she said, and when you got it on tape, it sure makes the he said, she said a lot different when everybody can watch what happened. And so, we don't, we don't wanna get into confrontations, wanna keep our streets and communities safe, but wanna do it in a friendly manner. And so, our night out tomorrow is just a reflection of that same, that same philosophy, having police officers out at ballgames and riding bikes and walking. Again, we want those one-on-one contacts. We want people to know the police officers, to be, feel comfortable visiting with them about problems. And so, hopefully, we never have someone ambushing policemen in El Dorado. At least not as a reaction to something that we've done wrong, or believe we've done wrong. But so, we've been doing that, and I'm proud of that, and we'll continue to do that, and don't wanna think about us and them. It's us, and it's certainly true with our citizens and our police in blue. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Item two, item 10, not two. Item 10 on our agenda is the executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters, land acquisition, and matters related to non-elected personnel. That's got all three in there. It's gonna be a full meeting. Should we start with an hour?
How about quarter after, and then maybe we can, maybe some of them won't take too long.
Okay. So, until, this is 8:15, right?
I move to recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters, land acquisition, and matters pertaining to non-elected personnel, and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the city commission room at 8:15 p.m.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further questions, comments? Favor say aye.
Aye.
We will convene into executive session until 8:15. Thank you.